All right, it's six o'clock. We seem to have everyone here and they're in their places. So we'll begin the, this evening's work session. And the topic is the pay and compensation study. And Helen, good evening.
Thank you. Before I actually get started, I do want to make just one opening comment that I hope everybody is here to really concentrate on the pay study and realize how important it is to the employees and to the gardeners. I haven't been here that long, but I've made tours of all of the facilities. And you actually have, or we have, some very hardworking, dedicated, compassionate employees here at Gardner. So I hope everybody realizes this and knows that the result of this is really going to have longstanding effect on employee morale and education, okay? So, the first thing I wanted to talk about is during the 2015 budget process, the governing body directed the staff to complete a compensation study, and that included $230,000 set aside for salary adjustments. Then the governing body requested the staff to implement changes to the salary structure and award merit increases for 2014. As of today, there have not been merit increases awarded yet. So the staff is requesting the city council governing body to provide direction on implementation of the pay and compensation study and awarding of merit increases based on their performance reviews. Now, before you is the current pay plan. And I have to be honest with you. When I interviewed the job, I looked at everything on the website of Gardner. And I saw this, and I really couldn't hardly believe it. Not because of the top of the range, but because of the midpoint progression and the range spread. Not so much the range spread, but the midpoint progression. I would, in my, over 30 years, I've actually never seen a pay plan that had such, how should I say it, unequal midpoint progression from pay grade one to the top of the pay grades. It just doesn't make any sense. Quite frankly, what this looks like is that the pay grades might have been actually adjusted or added based on somebody wanting to give somebody special consideration for something, okay, additional money probably. Or they didn't know what they were doing. One of those two, I think, is what the situation is. So, as I said there about the current pay grades. So the highlight of the Gardner study is there is, there would be internal equity. And the way that was determined is that current information on all positions were gathered, covering the duties, responsibilities, reporting relationships, and KSA. KSA's are knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to do the job. Job descriptions and interviews with department directors were also held. So the consultant felt very confident that she had good information on the internal equity and what the jobs considered. External competitiveness. The thing to remember is Gardner is a growing community, okay? Gardner is no longer out away from Kansas City. Gardner is a suburb of Kansas City now. In my education, I believe it's referred to as an outer ring suburb. It is a little further out than, let's say Prairie Village, but it's still within easy driving distance to the city of Kansas City. So our employees have the opportunity to go to any city they want to south of the river, even north of the river. So to think that Gardner is isolated and people will not go to other cities is not correct, or to other corporations. In fact, I looked at the number of our employees that live within the Gardner zip code. Within the Gardner zip code, we have about 48 or 49 percent of our employees living within that zip code. And of course, we know that that zip code actually goes outside of Gardner, so the actual numbers are lower than that. So, looking at the marketplace, other organizations that would be looking to recruit employees with similar background and skills, you need to take that into account. And later in this presentation, I'm going to show you what they, what their pay grades look like. Salary surveys that were used in this are on page three of the salary report. I assume you all have that salary report. And then what this is actually based on, the salary plan is based on, is the comp ratio, the comp ratio is actually the market midpoint of that particular salary grade, okay? So everything would revolve around the midpoint. The midpoint would be the perfect place to actually pay employees. So, here is the proposed salary ranges. As you can see, they go up to a grade 10. And they are all 15 percent midpoint progression. They're all 50 percent wide. And this system is built to ensure equity and parity within the pay policies and procedures of the city. This will also allow us to balance our resources in an equitable manner. So when raises are given, or people, or jobs are assigned to certain ranges, it will be more equitable than it is now. Okay, then the comparison, and I know you've probably seen this, this was actually handed out by the consultant. This is a comparison of the current ranges on the right and then the proposed ranges on the left, okay? Now, Kristy, you have asked for me to review exit interview data. So this is a report that actually I can't take credit for. This is a report that was done prior to me arriving. Okay, so the first page of this is the reason for leaving. Now this is exit interview data from 2008 to 2014. So that's six years of data, okay? So you could see the main reason for these people leaving is to accept another position, okay? And also, the majority of them were voluntary resignation, or a lot of them were resignations. Now if you go to the second page, I won't try and go through the bottom chart, but the top chart is what do you like least about your job? What do they like least about your job? Their salary, okay? Their salary is the number one thing. The other thing that is also addressed in this study is opportunity for advancement, all right? So, and then other things we need to work on, and we plan to do that in the engagement committee that starts tomorrow, is lack of recognition of work. But the two number one reasons, salary and opportunity for advancement, are both addressed in the salary plan. And then the last page is what are the advantages of the new job that you don't have here, question? And that is, the number one is opportunity for advancement and increased compensation, okay? So keep in mind on the opportunity for advancement, that this K-plan suggests that we have what I refer to as career ladders, okay? And I could tell you that since I have been here, I've had many, many employees coming to my office and saying that they don't feel that they have an opportunity to advance here. And that they have various, whether it be degrees, certifications, registrations, and right now under the current system, those are really not appropriately considered. So we want to change that, okay? So also, I forgot, I know one of you, I don't know if it was Lee or Steve, asked about 2014 salary data compared to 2015 salary data. And really, that information is in your salary study book because there's not been a raise in 2015, so what they made in 2014, they're still making in 2015, okay? And the report in there is by job title, and it's easy to determine what people were Okay, now I promised you that I would show you what other cities are making, or what other cities are paying, or their pay grades. Now this is not by job, because, and I want to make clear, I'm not eligible for any of this, so I have no, I'm not doing this for myself. I'm doing it for the 100 or 120 employees that work here. So I took off all of the job titles, so there wasn't an issue with saying, oh, you're just trying to get him or her a raise, okay? So here are K grades from surrounding cities that we were able to obtain, Laura, who goes So what I want to point out, okay, you look at, what I really want to point out is what the top K grades are, because I know that was a big issue at, when we previously discussed this in April. So if you look at Lawrence, Kansas, towards the bottom, their top pay grade is, goes to the top is about $134,000. Then Leewood, Leewood, their top pay is $150,000. Lenexa, their top pay is $142.6. Well, second, the, I think those are two-sided, so it's actually $198.635 is the top for Lenexa. For Merriam, that's $153,229. And for Aletha, it's $163,724. For Prairie Village, it's $169,256. And for Shawnee, it's $152,108. So these are the ones we were able to get. So our top of the range being at $140,000 is not unreasonable or outside the norm. Okay, so I know you have asked for K-range scenarios, and I also have handouts for that. So we have here scenario one, what the, that's the comp ratio matrix with no changes, by department, what the cost would be. Scenario two is if we gave a 4 percent for people's scoring exchange and a 2 percent for those people obtaining a meet expectations. And then the third scenario is comp ratio with the compressed K ranges for levels eight, So if you remember, at the beginning of this presentation, we indicated that the budget includes $230,000 set aside for salary adjustments. So as you could see, the highest one, which is scenario one, is $161,415, okay? So there's a 70,000, almost $70,000 savings there. And really, so, you know, that, I suppose is really up to you as a governing body as to which one you want to use. But I think the staff is really recommending scenario one, and the others would be options, okay? Because the K grades that have been recommended are fair, are appropriate, and would be best for the employees of Gardner, okay? So, at the council meeting tonight, recommendations, one is to adopt an ordinance revising the position and classification system and pay plan for 2015, and then a resolution to revise section 5-107 and section 5-108 in the personnel policy manual. And that would be the comp ratio. Recommendation two would be to just adopt a resolution making changes to section 5-108 about merit increases and doing nothing with the pay plans. Also, I do want to say, and I'm just being honest with you, the employees that have come to my office have told me that they are tired of waiting. They are tired of waiting for raises and promises that can't get past the council, okay? I'm not, don't shoot the deliverer of the message, but that is the honest to God truth, what they are telling me, okay? And as far as turnover, I know you're interested in turnover. In 2010, there was 10.8 percent. 2011, 8 percent. 2012, 9.3. 2013, 8.3. And 2014, 13.9. So that's what the turnover has been for the last four years. So hopefully, I answered your questions. Certainly, I know we still have quite a bit of time. If you have any questions, but I hope you will take all of this under advisement and remember this is all about the employees of Gardner, and then you will make the right decision, okay? Thank you.
Questions?
Yes.
Looking this way first?
I actually, I mean, I don't have questions about the pay ranges specifically. I do have questions about the next step, because more to, because one of the concerns that I heard, and you kind of addressed it, but I'd just like to have a conversation about it, is the fact that some of the positions are lumped into pretty general categories. I'll use operators, maintenance workers. And the thought and the concern that we don't differentiate between those workers. So if I have somebody with all of the water certifications, they're categorized as somebody who doesn't have any. So can you talk a little bit about how that next step is going to work and who will be involved?
And one of the places that I went last week was wastewater. And I heard about that, that this person, certain people there have a level four. And also, there is concern about why does this department get paid more than the other department or whatever? What our plan is, in fact, I had someone in my office this morning talking about it, very upset about it. What our next step is, is to look at career ladders. Now some, there's a number of terms for that, but in effect, what we're talking about are different levels. For instance, maybe there should be engineer one and two, or maybe there should be a wastewater operator, one, two, and three, based on their knowledge, skills, and ability, and so on and so forth. And maybe there should be an accountant, one and two. So that's what we have to look at. We have to, and I know that was touched on in the study. And I have to be honest with you, it's doubtful that a city the size of Gardner would be five levels or something, okay? But two or three levels would be very reasonable for an organization this size, as long as it's really there, okay? And I, what we would do, I want to address it with the engagement committee that's meeting tomorrow. I want to look at what other cities are doing. We need to make sure our job descriptions are updated. The person that came to my office with his manager today, what I told him was, if you feel that your job is really different, what you're doing, then the person sitting next to you, then working with your manager, what we will do is prepare a new job description for you with the accurate description of your job and your requirements. And that's what the next step would be, okay?
How long do you foresee something like that taking? And when you're taking into consideration the multiple departments, is that something that could be done in a, you know, a kind of a set timeframe, you know, a week, two weeks per department, so that we can, we can kind of get a set timeline of how long it's going to take to get that stream?
Well, what I would really like to do, and assuming I get the cooperation of Jeff and Laura and the other department directors, which I'm sure I would, I'd like to have something ready to propose by the time we're looking at the budget for 2016. I can't give you a specific timeline, or how many weeks each department, every department's a different size, so, but that would be my goal.
Lee?
Question on the compressed pay ranges.
Yes.
I understand that the comp ratio matrix is what we received from the consultant, correct? We paid for that.
Yes.
So those numbers are what we bought, essentially. So what, where did we get this, these compressed figures?
That was something we calculated, our management analyst calculated, based on the previous conversation here, I guess actually it was the previous council. It was brought up that they felt 140 was too high, and we talked about not having 10 ranges and going just to nine ranges, and the top of grade nine would be 120 something. So that's what it's based on.
So just a consensus of some folks, and you guys threw some numbers together, or did you knock?
Sure, I think we threw a percentage out.
All we did, all we did was ask for the, for pay grades eight, nine, and 10 to be reevaluated at 10 percent salary progression. Because in terms of real dollars, we were seeing accelerated curve upward on that midpoint progression. I'm not looking at percentages, because percentages over, you know, over percentages is a cumulative increase. So the actual dollar amount between ranges increases, and so does the, again, we were talking about that cone, all right? As you go higher up, the cone gets wider. And we were trying to, you know, provide means by which we could have career advancement and have those ranges in an equitable manner, but not have the top end. So out of line, and to be honest, I'll be perfectly honest with you guys, we are not Prairie Village. We're not Lenexa. We're certainly not Overland Park. So when I see, okay, well, yeah, the maximum, and actually in Aletha, the maximum salary is 221,943. Does that mean that we need to create a pay grade that's going to have a maximum salary of 221?
Okay, so what I am-
I mean, it's, and I know we didn't. What I'm saying is that I don't think that, you know, I appreciate the work that was put in to get the pay ranges for other communities. But I think that if we take 15 percent up to pay grade eight and go above that with a 10 percent salary progression, if we need to add another pay grade with another 10 percent increase, let's do it. We can do it. We can change our policy, our policy, our pay schedule anytime we want with an ordinance. But I don't see any reason why we can't use, I think it's, I think it's a happy medium between what we were originally going to have with the old evaluation matrix and the comp ratio matrix provided by Gardner. I think it comes right in the middle.
So I appreciate what you're saying, and what I just handed out is an example of a K-grade salary projections. And these are just projections. We don't really know what the future would be and what the percentage increases would be. But if somebody now at K grade is making $100,000 a year, it would take them approximately, using this, as you say, compounding it, it would take them approximately 10 years to reach the top of the range, okay? So it's not like we're talking about anyone jumping to the top of the range. And I don't know what the financial situation is at Prairie Village, or obviously Overland Park is a lot bigger, or any other of the cities. But quite frankly, I think you really need to think that you are those cities, because the residents will expect the same services that Prairie Village and any other city has from their employees. The county is moving this way. You want to, I know you want to have good development here and grow the city. You've got to have good employees, professional employees, that are dedicated, engaged, and want to be here. And if you don't pay them appropriately, they're not going to stay in there really.
So $5,000 difference in the coming year could mean the difference between keeping our employees and losing them.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I don't know. I do know that department managers- I do know that department managers have told me employees are in their first or second interview with other cities. I do know that. Okay? So we will lose employees if we don't adopt a new range, and if we don't, if we don't give them a merit increase right away.
And I had no, and I never said that we were going to do that. And I also don't appreciate, and I know you may, you're saying you're the messenger, but I don't like the implication that we don't care about the employees because we're not giving them, because we, because we're not giving them an immediate increase like what we were supposed to do two weeks ago. I don't appreciate that, and I don't like being lectured to. And we are, we are members of a governing body that has two masters. We have the staff who we want to take care of. We want to appreciate and reward them for their service. We also have 20,000 citizens in this city that are also looking to us for managing their money in a wise and equitable manner. So, you know, that's, that's what I want, I want that on the record, because I don't, I don't think it is all about the employees. It is, to a great extent, and we're going to take care of the employees. We're going to do it tonight.
Good.
There's going to be a vote, and it's going to be in the affirmative. It may not be what you want. It may be the compressed ratios.
That's fine.
Okay? But, you know, I want to make sure that every employee who either is in this room or sees this on YouTube understands where we're coming from as a governing body. And I think I'll appreciate this.
And I appreciate that, and I wasn't trying to imply anything. All I'm saying, what I was telling you are what employees are telling me. That's, that's where I was coming from.
They won't be waiting any longer after this.
Okay, that's great. That's great.
I mean, can you explain, by doing the compressed ratio, how that's detrimental? How does that?
Well-
Because, I mean, and we can always adjust things, I mean-
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think I said it was detrimental. What I, what I said is that what we would prefer, what we are recommending, is that we go with the actual recommendations by the consultant, because of the work she did and the information she collected, and the way it, the way it rolls out. The only thing that's going to do, you could, you could look at the information I handed out with the comp ratio, with the, it'll cost about 156, 156 or 7,000 as compared to 161,000. So that 5,000 as seen down-
Scenario of three versus one, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
And that's assuming they get the maximum, right? That's assuming that those people that are in the highest level get a 6 percent increase. Correct?
That is-
Or is that to bring them to the 90 percent?
No, that, that, we did not, I don't believe it's a 6 percent. In the business page on a spread, let me see if I brought that with 26 for the-
Yeah, so I, well, I'm saying, so when we do this rating, and I'll just take, let me take-
It's actually, it's actually five.
Assuming in the middle. Assuming the middle of that range.
So the mid point.
Assuming the midpoint.
So, and the only people that are, that would get five are those people that are at 90 percent or less, comp ratio. Okay? Then it goes to four, three, and then depending upon if they didn't get it and exceed, they got it and achieved, it would be three, two, and one.
Got it.
Okay?
One thing to expand, to just elaborate on the question that you asked, gentlemen. You, when you do a compressed pay range, what you have is you change the max, which changes your midpoint. The comp ratio is based on the midpoint. So what you in fact have is a consultant who said the market is the range that's presented. The consultant has indicated the comp ratio is less than the best practice of 90 percent. When you change those numbers, you give the appearance that you really are meeting the market at 90 percent, when in fact you really aren't. So what that translates to is, that translates to the percentage of increase for employees in those pay ranges is reduced, because it's moved their number from anywhere from 84, 85, or 86, it's moved their number to 90. And so it makes it look like they're at 90 percent, and their increase is less. So that's just a piece that I want to make sure you all understand, the dynamics of how this system works.
I guess from my perspective, if, if we agree, and I'm not saying everybody does, but if we agree with the logic that went into this for pay ranges entry level through seven, I don't know how we, I mean, I get, we're trying to manage, we don't like having these high salaries out there, and nobody's in that high salary. But if you agree with the methodology for these lower levels, how do you say, I agree with it, but then I don't for the top three? To me, that's just, it just doesn't, it's inconsistent. And I think that what, I think that's part of the problem that we've seen historically, is that we move certain ranges, and we try to do whatever we try to do. And as a result, eventually, now eight, nine, and 10, if somebody goes to do a salary study, I don't know, five years down the road, it may even be worse. And I just, to me, the methodology is the methodology. And if, if we make a decision that, hey, listen, we don't want to give pay ranges or raises for that, to me, that's a better decision. I mean, I don't agree with it, but that's a better decision than saying, we agree with the methodology for some, but we don't agree with it for the rest.
Well, that's why staff is recommending the other one. You know, if you as a governing body decide to go with the compressed one, and that's what the consensus is, then I say, go ahead and do it, because the employees need a raise.
And Christie, I agree. It all just kind of clicked for me. That, I agree with what you said on that. That, that makes sense. Looking at broad scope.
Lee?
And that's, and that's, that's fine. And I think there's going, I had a feeling there was going to be some lighter discussion on this at the day, so I appreciate it. Here's the reason why I was looking at the comp ratio versus the compressed. Again, when you're looking at real dollars, okay? I'm not talking about percentages. I'm looking at real dollars. Okay? When you are doing 15 percent cumulative, on top of 15 percent, on top of 15 percent, your real dollar amounts go like this. Okay? All I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to flatten the curve just slightly on the real dollar acceleration. All right? Which is, which is, that's not out of the question. And if we need to add an 11th pay grade in the compression, there's nothing stopping us from doing that. We could do that at any time. If we find two years down the road that this is not going to work, we can always add another pay grade and do some reevaluation of positions. We shift positions between pay grades all the time. And when we do that step ladder-ing, like you're talking about, maybe we step ladder into a pay grade 11. Okay? We may, we may do that anyway. Okay? So I don't see the huge deal in this. Okay? You're talking about a total of five, less than $5,000 difference between the comp ratio study and the compressed study, both of which I think are better alternatives than what we currently got. I'm not interested in-
I would, I would agree with you 100 percent. And I'm not saying you shouldn't do the compressed, or the staff isn't saying. It's just, you know, this is, the other one is the one we're recommending. If you want to-
Sure.
Go with, with that one, that's fine. My, my main thing for being up here, get the employees away.
Absolutely.
And that, if that's-
We're all in agreement on that.
If you want to do it that way, I say, however it is.
We're all in agreement on that one.
Okay.
But I, I agree it's only $5,000. But I think, you know, to what Christie said, I think keeping it consistent, in my mind, makes it a better, a better option for me.
I'm keeping the marginal dollars consistent. The marginal dollars between grades are consistent, much more consistent with a compressed at the top tier than they are with 15 percent over, on each of the pay scales. The dollars work better for us, as a city.
Well, when we're, when we're talking about, and we've mentioned the $5,000 figure a couple of different times.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if, I'm with Christie on this too, because, you know, if, if the methodology works for the lower pay grades, then it should work for the upper pay grades as well. And it does speak to internal equity as well, in my opinion. And, and yes, I realize that we're not Lawrence, or Leewood, or Lenexa, or Marion. But we actually are a more complex city than any of those cities. Prairie Village, you know, we have, we run our own utilities, water, wastewater, electric. That impacts across more, that impacts across public works, utility department, finance and accounting, and administration. It, it makes Gardner a much more complex city to run. So while there is, while we certainly don't have the same population of a, of a Lenexa, and we're smaller than Leewood, we're certainly much larger than Marion, or, and we're, we're as big and growing larger than Prairie Village.
You say that, that you're not the other ones. But I, I was able to drive around with Jeff looking at the parks, and I would put your park system up against any park system in Johnson County, any park system.
Well, and thanks for saying that, because I would too.
Well, certainly. I, here's the thing about the park system. It's still not able to pay for itself, first of all. Second of all, our demographics, in terms of our per capita income in this community, are about 30 percent less than almost every city on this study. Okay? So again, it comes back to how much are we going to ultimately, if we were to go with a higher pay range? I don't want to go into the situation of taxation, and maybe individuals out in this community would want to pay a lot more in taxes to take care of the employees. If they're willing to do that, I'm happy with it. But I would probably venture to say that a whole lot of people would probably not pay a whole lot more in taxes, you know, in support of pay ranges that we cannot sustain. Same thing with the parks.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Absolutely.
This is just a, the way I look at this, this is just a, this is a pay range. It's a guideline. We are still going to have to approve this bottom, this bottom dollar every time.
Yes, we will.
And, and we're going to have to do the same thing for every department. I mean, well, we're probably going to have to delegate that. But it's going to get done for every department. This department's going to get a bump of 3 percent. This one's going to get 1 percent. This one's, it's going to be all dependent upon where the folks fit in the quad trial. So I don't see this as we're sitting here approving $140,000 salary for anybody. We're just, all we're doing is approving this, the structure. And we need a structure. We have to have a structure to move forward. And, and, you know, I also see that this, the comp ratio that they worked up for us, we can even play with those numbers in, in terms of changing the 90 percent or less in the first quad trial to, from four to six percent, down to three to five percent. So there's a lot of variability, a lot of stuff we can play with later on. So do we really want to quibble over a $5,000 difference in, in this, or not? I mean-
And I have another question too. I don't want to discontinue this conversation. On some of these that are fairly low on the comp ratio, as far as methods to, I mean, particularly like in the police department, some other areas, to get them closer to their comp ratio in a more expedient way? You know, I saw something in here about doing merit evaluations, maybe biannually on some of those?
Yes, that's a possibility. We haven't really, I haven't discussed that really with Cheryl in any detail. I mean, the other way, of course, it would take your action, approve the money, would be a market adjustment. You don't have to give a market adjustment to every person or every job in the city. If you feel certain jobs are below the market, you can give a bump up to, to those jobs. So it doesn't have to be a cross-board market adjustment.
It did seem like some pretty far-
Biannual would be another way to do it.
And we did talk about that with the consultant. She suggested that we look at them more frequently, or we could, you could establish that you want everybody at, you want to look at 80 and do a market adjustment, and then leave the others to comp ratio. But we could do those evaluations more. Her recommendation was to do evaluations more frequently, so that you're actually looking at performance-related increases. So there's definitely a way to adjust.
And what about, I, one of the things that I, and maybe you've done this, but I don't know, but looking at police officers specifically, because that's a great example of payment potential issues. But I'm sure some of the, I mean, some people, not everybody's going to be at 90 percent. If we hire somebody new, and they've been here a year, I mean, they'll gradually get there. So will there be an ability, I mean, can, what I would like to see, I guess, is you to come back and say, hey, we've looked at these, let's choose, please, for example, and here's kind of the dispersing. You have a person who's been here 10 years, and you've had a person that's been here two years. Our recommendation is this, as far as raises, but not everybody, I mean, the goal should not be everybody's at 90 percent.
You're talking about market adjustments.
Yeah, exactly. But maybe, maybe it's not, I mean, but not everybody would necessarily get a mar, I mean, if I have a new police officer that's here a year, maybe that's not the direction. I mean, so-
That's, that's similar to what I would see, talking about a lot of consultants.
You're talking about leveling and step ladder-ing, and that's-
Well, that's something different than what she was talking about.
What you're, what you're talking about really is generally, you want to be at midpoint after you have someone a couple of years, with a couple of years of experience.
Right.
So you would not have your entry level person at 90 percent, because they would, you'd want them to have a couple of years. So typically, what you do is you look at a hiring range of where you would hire them, and then you look at the range for 90 percent for your long-term employees.
Right, because we do not want to hire everybody in it, you know, to look at all the people. Somebody's got 15 years of experience with some other city or corporation, that experience may be as good as working here 15 years. So you have to give them credit for that.
Other questions or comments? Well, okay, it looks like we'll get back to this-
Okay.
Later on in the new business items for the council meeting.
Okay.
Ellen, I want to thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate the hard to do and staff put in to facilitate this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
What about, what about our interactions from the citizens?
Oh, okay. I don't know that we'd, we'd ever gotten to the point where we'd said that we were going to do work sessions that were interactive every time. But I, I'm perfectly willing to, to see the-
Never mind, never mind. It's not important enough, never mind. There was a consensus of the city council members at one of the meetings, that they had no problem with there being interactive work sessions where the citizens can contribute. I don't know who's picking and choosing which ones citizens can make a comment at. But evidently, it's not important to you, mayor, or possibly the council, so never mind. I'll keep my comments to myself.
Certainly, you're right.
Thank you.
That being the case, we've got about 10 minutes before the 7 o'clock council meeting convenes. We look to see all back here. In time to get started.